Good evening to all who are watching us live streaming by Zoom or YouTube. We want to welcome you to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting for February 1st. I now call the Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Yes ma'am, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Here.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Commissioner Albright?
Here.
Commissioner Coulson?
Here.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Here.
Commissioner Nunley?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Here.
Everyone is present.
Thank you. At this time, we will have invocation by Commissioner Alex Albright and pledge by Commissioner Mayor Perkins-Williams.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and for your many blessings. We ask that you be with us and those we serve this evening and as we move together into this new year of promise. Amen.
Hands over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Would you repeat with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and mine isn't working.
For which it stands.
You're working there.
Alright.
Under God.
May we start again? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have the proof of the agenda.
And Chairman, I got to raise the hand, okay?
Okay, Commissioner White?
Yes ma'am, thank you Chairwoman. I want to make a motion to approve the agenda with making an amendment to the minutes from last meetings, last month's meeting in January for the item for decision number one to reflect the no vote for me. As y'all remember, I was having internet trouble and I was kicked off before the vote. So if we could make that, to amend that, I would appreciate it.
Commissioner, Mr. Manager, you about to speak?
Yes Chairman Floyd Huggins, I think on the, when you do that, when you do the items for consent, if there's any change to the minutes, it would normally to pull the minutes off the consent item and then have them reflect what Commissioner White is trying to do there rather than at the approval of the agenda. Because this approval of agenda deals with tonight's agenda versus the first, but it's up to you.
We will deal with it at the time of minutes. Thank you for that suggestion. Now, would you like to make, still make the motion to approve the agenda, Commissioner White?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. The agenda stands approved, Madam Clerk?
Yes Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
The only thing I'd like to say is that I was trying to raise my hand to be able to ask that the items for decision number one be moved up to after presentations so that we could get Jackie Haddock not having the hanging on for two hours. If that would not be improper.
Well, we already, we already in the process of voting.
Madam Chair?
Okay.
I'm in my motion to accept Mr. Coulson's suggestion.
Madam Attorney, are we already in the process of voting? Can we?
We ain't voted yet.
We're in the process of.
Oh.
You're in the process of voting, I believe Commissioner White made the motion and Commissioner Perkins-Williams seconded it. So I would suggest that you proceed with your vote. If someone is not in favor of the motion, they could vote that way. And if another motion needs to be made afterwards, you can do that.
Well, the only, the only thing I'd like to say, the thing I'd like to say about it, I had my hand raised, I wasn't called on. This has happened before, these virtual meetings get kind of tangled up. And I don't want to make a big stink about it, but I just feel like there ought to be an exception sometimes. I mean, I did have my hand up.
So Commissioner Coulson, I thought your hand was left up from when you, when you gave the information about that. That was, it was never, it was never lowered, lowered because I watched your hand. So that is why I didn't call on you. I just want to say that, that's why I didn't call. So let's proceed with the, with the voting and then if someone wants to vote against it, then, so let's continue with the process.
And, and Madam Chair, if I may also, Chairwoman may also say that if a second motion needs to be made after this one, there's nothing that prohibits that from happening.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Commissioner, Commissioner Coulson?
No.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes, the main point of clarification, did not Tom ask for the public addresses to be moved before presentation? I believe we're already there, so I think.
We're in good shape. So your vote?
Item, item for decision.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
No.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Uh.
We're voting.
I have no problem with moving it, so if I vote no, I can't offer the motion that we do what Tom wants. It doesn't matter, you know what I mean? So how do I vote, Madam Attorney? I want to be able to.
I can't tell you how to vote, Commissioner Perkins-Williams, but I can tell you that if you are not in favor of a motion to approve the agenda as it is currently ordered, then you would vote no. If you are in favor, then you can vote yes. Neither of those votes would prevent you from making a motion later to rearrange something.
Thank you. You caught me right away. I approve yes, yes, yes.
Motion passes seven to.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, I see Commissioner Coulson?
Okay, then if it's not improper, according to what Tina said, I'd like to make a motion that we move Jackie Haddock's items for decision number one up to after the public addresses.
This is Commissioner White, I will second that motion.
Let's just wait just a minute. What number are we?
It's item for decision, it's number one.
That says minutes.
This is the Confederate monument item under items for decision as Commissioner Coulson is referencing.
Yeah, my concern is that if we may go to eight o'clock and Jackie Haddock is here and why can't we just take care of this if possible and then let him get off and go do other things? I hate to ask him to wait two hours.
No, we will, we will put that to a vote. Am I right, Madam Attorney?
Yes, that's correct. You have a motion and a second on the floor and I don't see any hands up for discussion, so you may proceed to vote.
Madam Chairman, could I, can I make a suggestion? You do have somebody on public addresses of the board that I think was going to speak on the matter of the monument. I don't know if the board would want to consider doing this, letting that, we only have one speaker, Marcus Kerichon, Kerichon signed up? And if you wanted to hear that speaker first before you heard the monument issue and then voted or vote first?
Okay, then I amend by motion to be after presentations rather than public addresses. Is that what you're saying? I said after public addresses before.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm confused. You're correct, Commissioner Coulson, you're good.
Sorry, I'm making such a confused mess out of this tonight.
You are. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to to move item one under items for decision up to after public address. Is that right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, Madam, Madam Clerk?
Yes ma'am, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn? Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Alright, so now we will open the floor for a, for the public address, Mr. Manager. Do we have?
Yes ma'am, we have two people signed up actually. We have Jackie, well Jackie Haddock is on here, but I think he's probably going to be more for the Confederate monument unless he wanted to speak. We also have Marcus Kerichon, I think if you'll take these in the order. I do have Mr. Haddock on the, the public addresses list, I guess we'll recognize him first.
Madam Chair, I'll keep your time at three minutes, notify you when that's up. And as we say before all public addresses to the board, Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Please keep all comments respectful and when you begin to speak, please state your name and address for the board.
Okay. Mr. Haddock?
Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am.
You may speak.
Well, I really didn't come prepared to speak. I just thought I was to be present, you know, for the vote and you know, see what the outcome was, etc.
Okay.
I, you know, you caught me off guard.
Let's move on.
But you know, naturally, I'm, you know, in favor of and desire the monument to be re-erected. Just sorry that I wasn't better prepared or aware that you guys were going to want me to have comments or other comments.
Well, Mr. Haddock?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you for, for being here, for being on the call and we will, you can stay on and listen for the vote. So you don't have to make a speech if you not prepared to, but we thank you for, for being on the call.
Yes ma'am, thank you for having me.
Okay. Mr. Manager, the next speaker?
Yes ma'am, next we have Marcus Kerichon.
Mr. Marcus, you on?
Yes, can you hear me?
Good afternoon.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, Marcus Kerichon, Aiden, North Carolina. But I am the voice representing many, many people from not only the county, the state and the nation that all feel the same way as I do about the moving of this monument. Did I hear correctly that you have already voted on it before hearing from the public?
No, we have not.
Okay, so you did, but then you, I think you changed it, so now you're going to re-vote?
We have not voted tonight.
Okay, because it sounded like a while ago you were voting on it.
No, we are at the public address part of the meeting.
Okay, because it sounded like a while ago, it sounded like a while ago it had already been voted on, it was about to pass.
No, we were voting, we were voting to amend our agenda. So we could, so we could move Jackie Haddock.
Okay, because I did hear the monument brought up to start off with, that's what got confusing.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm going to try to keep this as short as possible. As we all know, from even the past meeting and the past before the monument was even moved, very many people are upset, but not enough people are allowed to voice their opinions. They're not even, not even a public vote that should have been done when taxpayers' money is involved. So this monument has been brought down illegally both by state and federal laws. Therefore, it can't even be put back up where it's supposed to be legally. Nothing fits right. And legal processes can be and will be, if this is handled correctly, will be pursued. And this monument being taken care of as it should be. Not only that, the media is going to be brought involved, protests are going to be made, it's going to be a big mess. I mean, I really think you guys should think this through before you so fastly pass a vote to do something that can cause a lot of controversy down the line. Especially in the world that we live in today, you see how crazy this world has gotten, how folks have gotten, it could be a really bad mess. And it's, it's not even going anywhere where, anywhere close to where it has come from. So until this matter can be resolved, it's just going to have, the best thing is probably just keep it hidden away where nobody even knows where it is. It won't be vandalized until we can get this matter settled. It's going to have to apparently settle into a court of law. I need to take that consideration. And like I said, I don't only speak for myself, I speak for many, not only this county, across state and the nation. And people should have a bigger voice than this, than just these small commissioner meetings on a Zoom thing. There's been taxpayers' money to remove this monument. Then you got storage time, then you've got the money that it's going to take again to re-erect it. Not including, I believe, was a 99-year lease on it. A lot of money coming out of taxpayers' pockets that don't approve. So it just needs to be handled a totally different way. I appreciate you guys listening to me and you guys have a blessed night.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah. Is that the last speaker, Mr. Manager?
Scott, you're muted.
We did have one other person under public addresses, David Byram, but I think he'll speak under the Eagle Scout recognitions.
Okay. Right, so that was the last one?
Yes ma'am.
Alright, so we'll move now to the presentation, recognizing Eagle Scouts. Mr. Manager?
We made the other, we made the Confederate item next.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Okay, I'm sorry. I wrote it in, but still. Okay, we will move to the Pitt County Confederate Monument Donation and Relocation and that is going to be Attorney Gallagher and Manager Scott.
Scott, did you want me to proceed?
Yeah, let me just kind of give the introduction, I'll turn to you Janice. So as the board is aware, the monument was taken down last summer and was put into, to storage at an undisclosed location. The board agreed for the chairman of the board at that time, Commissioner Melvin McLawhorn, to appoint a committee, which was done. Committee had met several times last summer and fall, even into this year, and that has brought us to where we are tonight with a recommendation from the committee. And with that, Janice, I'll let you fill in the details as to what we're trying to, what the recommendation is before the board.
Sure, as set forth in your package, I just also want to highlight that on June 15th, 2020, the relocation committee was formed and that include Chairwoman Anne Floyd Huggins, Commissioner Melvin McLawhorn, Commissioner Tom Coulson, Commissioner Chris Nunley, David Denard, Ephraim Smith, Yoshi Newman and Jerry McCroy. When that committee last met on January 11th, that committee unanimously voted to recommend that the Board of Commissioners donate the Confederate monument to the division, to the North Carolina Division of the Sons of the Confederate Veterans Incorporated for the purpose of re-erecting the monument in Pitt County on land owned by Ephraim Smith on NC 43 South in Pitt County, subject to a lease between the Sons of the Confederate.
That is not true, Jerry McCroy did not vote.
To effectuate that transfer if the board so desires, North Carolina General Statute 168-280 requires that the governing board publish notice at least five days prior to the adoption of a resolution approving the donation. In your board package, you will see a public notice that's been drafted for your review. You will also see a proposed resolution if the board desires to move forward with that plan. If so, the board would need to make a motion to authorize the manager to publish the notice in accordance with 168-280 and then the proposed resolution would come back to the board for approval on February 15th if that's the board's desire to follow the recommendation of the committee.
Okay, Scott?
Okay, we have some photos of the site that we'd like to show you as well as a map depicting where the proposed location for the monument would go to kind of give a context if our PIO can pull those up for us. Maybe show the, the site map first and then go into the photos. This is on NC 43 South, obviously southern part of Pitt County on former county commissioner Ephraim Smith's property. See more folks are pulling this up. Okay, here we go. This is actually the location and this photo would be to the right of it, there's a field, there's some trees, you'll see here in a minute. To, we see the signs there near the kind of ditch at the, at the road on NC 43. To the right there, there's a field, probably there's some trees planted in that field, it's brown looking, I believe that is the, the site location. And if we can pull up the map lastly. Okay. So you see coming down NC 43 South, it's about parallel over to Aiden in terms of how far down we are into the southern part of Pitt County. This would be on the west, west side of the road on NC 43 as you're traveling NC 43 South. So I don't know if Janice had anything else to add, but that's what I have right now.
Okay, as, as Attorney Gallagher said that we, the committee was formed and the committee met and, and this is the report coming back from the committee. Now, I would like to have members of that committee to speak and Commissioner Tom Coulson was on that committee. Commissioner Coulson?
Well, I'd, I'd like to say that everybody that was at that meeting, it is a fact that we unanimously voted to go ahead and move it and try to settle this issue once and for all, and I support this.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call on Commissioner McLawhorn, who was also on that committee.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. As stated by Commissioner Coulson, the committee unanimously approved that we move forward in the movement of this monument. And I certainly, at this time, Madam, Madam Chair, would like to make that motion that we are here with the recommendation of the committee that we, that we may move forward with this. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I would like to second that motion, but I think it's important to say what is written in here that the motion is to proceed with the steps necessary to donate the Pitt County Confederate Monument to the North Carolina Division of the Sons of Confederate Veterans, Inc. Authorizing the manager to publish the notice and to bring it back after we have made our vote this time when the resolution is approved. So I second the motion.
So noted, Commissioner Ward. You've heard the motion and it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes, you've got a note up that says the host is not allowing us to unmute ourselves. Please be attentive. I vote yes.
Correct, thank you. Can you allow people to unmute themselves, PIO? Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
I do not see her on the call anymore. Does he? Am I missing her or is she not there?
I don't see her.
Here, she's dropped off. Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And we'll have, we'll have the minutes reflect that she lost communication and, and her vote will be counted in accordance with your rules.
Thank you. Alright, I believe we are now ready to go back to the rest of the agenda in, in order. Am I correct?
Yes ma'am. Hopefully we can attract now.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Manager. Now we're ready for the presentation of scouts.
Yes ma'am, so we have about four different Eagle Scouts we've recognized tonight, five actually. And the first one is actually on the Zoom call tonight. We have David Roosevelt Byram with Troop 911. He'd like to speak to the board. So we have a certificate for Mr. Byram that is normally awarded in person, but due to the virtual environment, we are unable to do that. But we will make sure you get this and I will read the certificate if you would be so pleased, Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, please.
Okay, certificate of appreciation is awarded to David Byram for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. And it's recognized that the Boy Scouts of America, that within that organization, there's a very small percentage of. there's a very small percentage of young men that actually go on to earn the Eagle Scout Award. And we're proud to say here in Pitt County that the the number of young men that earn the Eagle Scout Award is two, three times the the national average. For his project, he constructed and installed several COVID protection partitions at the four-H Club. And that is noted on his certificate and it is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners on this first day of February twenty twenty-one, signed by our Chairwoman Ann Floyd Huggins. And we will make sure that this is presented to him for his keepsake. We also wanted to recognize a few other young men, they're not on the call tonight. Madam Chairwoman, did you want to allow Mr. Byram to say anything?
Yes, yes, if he would like to say something. Mr. Byram?
Do we still have him on the call?
I'd just like to say, gratefully appreciated.
Great, well, thank you, we appreciate your attending tonight and being here in a virtual manner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for the others, we have a certificate for Turner Cook. For his project, he refurbished the Recreation Center at the First Christian Church on Fourteenth Street. We then want to recognize Wade Bullock. For his Eagle Scout project, he refurbished the sensory riding trail at the Riding Horse Ranch Therapeutic Center. The next one to recognize, Matthew Hadnot. He constructed and installed a number of sturdy shelving units at the Walco School. Then our last recognition is to Isaiah Percy. For his project, he did a major restoration project at the Grifton Pentecostal Miss Church. So we'd like to congratulate these boys on these these major accomplishments within the Boy Scouts of America, becoming Eagle Scouts.
Certainly, we we say congratulations to all of them. I believe this is the highest recognition a scout can obtain. And I know when Commissioner McLawhorn was was chair, he always, you know, added that he also is a Eagle Scout, so, thank you.
Floyd Huggins, Commissioner McLawhorn does have his hand up and you need a motion for this item.
Oh, okay, Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, that's why my hand was up to make a motion that we approve of this very special recognition.
Commissioner Nunley?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approved this recognition and presentation, rather. Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick? Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Colson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn? Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes, can you hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay.
Uh, Madam Chairman, I got locked, kicked off, locked out. And if I didn't make that, I don't know what happened, I was sitting here with my hand in my lap. But I'm still here, I didn't leave for some reason, the computer did that.
So, all right.
However, the majority voted on with them, please record me as such.
Well, we did.
Thank you.
It was recorded as a yes, but thank you for, I'm glad you're back on. We're we're now at public hearing, so entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
And you won't need a motion for that, you can just go ahead and open it.
Just go ahead.
Or you'd like to hear some remarks from Ms. Andrews first.
Yes, I'd recommend you do that.
Any remarks from Ms. Andrews?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I do. Okay, Ms. Kelly Andrews?
Yes, can y'all hear me? Okay?
Yes, we can.
All right, good evening, Madam Chairwoman and County Commissioners. As as you were previously briefed on this project in December, this public hearing addresses the Development Commission's proposal of incentive package for Project Piper. This project consists of a company in the chemical product and preparation industry with a projected nine million dollar investment and twenty-five full-time jobs with an average salary of forty-two thousand dollars. As our charge is to facilitate industrial investment and job creation in Pitt County and the understanding that Project Piper is competitive with other states under consideration, the proposal includes an economic development grant equal to fifty percent of the net increase in abhorrent taxes paid by the company over five years with a cap at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and a match for a building reuse grant not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. We appreciate your support of this project.
Thank you. So are there any other speakers for speaking for that?
No, ma'am, nobody has signed up on their public addresses for this public hearing.
But you'll need to formally open your public hearing and then recognize no one and then close it. You'll open your public hearing.
Okay, I open the public hearing.
And again, Madam Chairwoman, there's nobody signed up unless there was somebody on the call that we didn't happen to recognize.
Okay, if nobody signed up, so I will close the public hearing for the economic development incentive. Commissioner Nunley?
Yes, Madam Chair, if it's appropriate, I I move that we accept the accept the proposal as presented.
Do it, Commissioner Ward?
I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept, approve that presentation, economic development incentive from Kelly Andrews. Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick? Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Colson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now move to the second one, do we have any? Do we want to have Brian speak first before it, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Brian?
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and Board of Commissioners. As presented earlier to the board, staff has worked with our financial and legal outside counsel and to prepare the issuance of limited obligation bonds for AG Cox Middle School, the reimbursement of the Warren Farm property, and a new compactor and floor at our solid waste site. As we were preparing the bonds, our financial counsel has notified us that the market is favorable for consideration of refunding, or better known as refinancing of select bonds that were issued in the past. Those bonds are Series two thousand and ten lobs that were for Pitt Community College, a refinance of our two thousand and one and two thousand and four B lobs, our Series two thousand and twelve certificates of participation, also known as COPS, which was a refinance of our two thousand and four B COPS and Pitt County School Facilities, our refinance of our two thousand and twelve installment financing for our energy saving program, and the two thousand and eighteen installment financing of the Animal Shelter renovation project. By taking advantage of these refundings now, we'll save the county significant money in in terms of reissuance. And just on the overall cost, the debt cost, over the next eleven years, we're looking at roughly on average about a hundred and nine thousand dollars a year in savings if we decide to move forward with our refunding of these particular bonds. In doing so, our bonds, we're going to break into two different packages for two thousand and twenty-one. Now, in your agenda, I may have accidentally flip-flopped these, but we're going to break these into two separate bonds, we're going to have a two thousand and one A and a two thousand and one B. So our two thousand and one A projects are going to be taxable and our two thousand and one B are tax exempt. So with our tax exempt, I'll start with those first because it's a longer list. This is going to be AG Cox Middle School, the solid waste projects, and the refunding of the two thousand and ten lobs, the two thousand and twelve energy savings, and the two thousand and eighteen financing of the Animal Shelter project. And then the second bond will be our two thousand and twenty-one A, which is taxable. And this will be the reimbursement of the Warren Farm property. And then the two thousand and twelve certificates of participation, the COPS loan. Combined, we're looking at thirty-four million, roughly thirty-four million dollars in this law package. And after allowing for the public hearing, the board is asked to consider to consider adopting the attached resolution, making certain findings relative to this proposed transaction. And additionally, you will give us permission to move forward with our application with the Local Government Commission in Raleigh. If if we move forward, we will meet with our three bond rating agencies in the middle of February. And we will also make sure that the Pitt County Board of Education takes care of their steps that are needed to move this process along. I've also prepared for you all a brief presentation explaining the three projects that we have talked mostly about. And then one slide that you do have a copy of, where I can get these, I can get you a copy of if you want the specific details of the refunding and refinancing. So I'm going to share my screen.
You may need PIO to look, there you go.
Can you all see it?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. So the first slide here is just an overall breakdown of the two different series, the two thousand two thousand and one A and two thousand and one B that I earlier mentioned. And as you can see on the right-hand screen, you can see the annual debt service starting in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, going into fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The main collateral is going to be the AG Cox Middle School for the entire project. So when we look at just AG Cox, as we've talked about, it's roughly, it's close to twelve and a half million dollars. It's a twenty-year project, we're looking at an average interest rate of one point nine one percent. If you look on the right at the chart, you can see our existing debt and our new debt represented by the bars part of the chart, and then if you look at the line, that's our anticipated revenue to pay for this particular portion of the lobs. This money will come from our restricted Article forty and forty-two sales. So as you can see, our projection, and we have a very, very conservative projection working with our our financial advisor of just one percent growth. It's highly unlikely it's going to be that low. Historically, our sales tax has improved much better than one percent, but just to play it safe, that one percent and as debt falls off should be more than sufficient to pay the debt on the AG Cox Middle School. The second project that we've talked about, it feels like over a year now, is the reimbursement of the Warren Farm project. Originally, the idea was to use the IDC tax, which we did increase to pay for the debt service. That increase on the tax two years ago is more than sufficient to pay the debt over the next ten years with the Warren Farm reimbursement. We're looking at an interest rate of averaging of one point six six percent. At our solid waste site, the third project, the third new project is the compactor and floor. We are looking at our existing solid waste revenue structure to pay that debt. That current structure is more than sufficient to pay the debt at a one point eight eight percent average interest rate over the next twenty years. And then lastly, this is a breakdown, I know the font's a little small, but I would direct your eye really to the far right-hand corner on the totals column. But this is a breakdown of the four existing debt packages that we are looking to refund. If you look in that far right-hand corner, you will see a million twelve is is the potential savings over the next eleven years. So at this, that's why I say it averages out to about a hundred and nine thousand dollars.
A year.
On the call today, I have Amy Vittner with First Try On, Amy is our financial advisor. And I have Paul Billows with with Wimble Bond and Dickinson, Paul is our legal counsel on the project. So they are here, if you have any specific questions, if I, myself, Scott, or Janice is unable to answer, Amy and Paul will gladly jump in. With that, that's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Brian. I see hands up, but do you have questions? And if there's questions before we open the here, the public hearing. Commissioner McLawhorn, do you have a question?
No, Madam Chair, I would just like to make a motion that we approve of this.
We have to open the hearing, open the hearing. Don't we?
Yes, ma'am.
We have to open the hearing before we can approve it. That's why I asked, I see hands for Commissioner Colson, do you have a question?
I do have a question, I do have a question.
All right, go ahead.
Concerning the Warren Farm and the IDC, with what's going to happen at July first of twenty twenty-one, the IDC officially is dissolved, is it not, it becomes a department of the County Department? It does, does that not also mean that the IDC money, that tax, because it was predicated on on that statute that had been granted in nineteen fifty-eight? That money no longer can go there, can it?
Right, the the. I'm sorry, Commissioner Colson.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm confused, how's that, how's it gonna? Are we just going to add that to our regular? Wow, okay.
So for the budget process for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, the idea would be to zero zero out the IDC tax. Obviously, you can do that up to three cents, currently it's point nine four, point nine four cent, less than one penny. The idea would be to zero that out and then either to add that to the general fund tax rate to pay for the expenses going forward. So then that would pay back this Warren Farm loan as well as staff and otherwise.
Yeah, but will that even exist anymore as an IDC tax? It's my understanding that IDC tax was predicated on the nineteen fifty-eight agreement. If that is, if that's dissolved effectively July first. Anyway, I don't want to tie the meeting up, I'd like some clarification somewhere in the future.
Well, I can say that IDC tax, the legislation will still be in existence. And you'll just basically be zero, theoretically, if you go with the recommendation, you'd be zeroing that tax out, adding that portion of it or some portion onto that, the Warren tax. And that result would be no tax increase, no difference in the overall tax bills for county taxes. And at some point, if you wanted to or needed to re-implement the IDC tax, you could do that. You'd have to have a board as per the legislation, you could have that up to three cents. If you had some major economic development project and you just needed to raise a penny, half a penny, two pennies, you know, whatever portion of the three pennies, you could always put that back into place. Zeroing it out does not cancel it out from the.
Okay, I just want to make, I just want to make certain we didn't leave something on. Well, go ahead.
Commissioner Nunley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brian, thank you for your really hard, I'm sure I can't even imagine how much hard work this lobs process is and the entire staff for doing that. But it looks like that because of the environment the county is set to save about one point, like one point one nine, one point two million in, I guess, the cost of our debt, is that correct?
So Commissioner Nunnely, that the one point two million dollars is an estimate of what we could save by refinancing at a better interest rate. That number is going to change annually, just depending on the other market variables. But for the sake of having this discussion today, that's what we've laid out, that a million, one million two hundred thousand is what we can hope to anticipate. It could be better. But right now, we're looking at about a hundred and nine thousand over the lifetime of those bonds over the next eleven years on average.
Thanks, bro.
Commissioner Ward.
In reference to moving our development department over into a department, which is, I'm totally in favor of. I think we're on the right track with that. And I know we're not going to do it until this fiscal year is over. But I would assume that we will allot them money like we do other departments in the budget relative to, and I assume they will have a board that she will be working with, you know, when all of that is transferred over into the county. So I think we'll be speaking to that at a later date as to how we organize that and set it up. But I'm just saying that out loud because, I mean, it's very hard to do development without a, a committee or a group because it still has to come to us and we make the final approval. But having a, a development committee is certainly in place. And our leader there needs to have that, have a board that she can speak to, just like all the rest of our department. So I think we'll deal with that later, but it'll be similar to what, you know, the other departments have.
You have any comments on that? Okay, Commissioner McGlaughorn, do you have another comment or you read, or I'm going to need to open the public hearing if there are no more comments. Commissioner McGlaughorn?
No, I was waiting for you to close the public hearing and that I'll make my recommendation.
Okay, the public hearing is now open.
Close, close, close the matter, Chief.
You'll have to open it first, then close it.
Yeah, I hadn't opened it. We were just hearing comments from, from Brian and whatever. Okay, so it, no speakers for the?
No, no, ma'am. Nobody signed up.
Okay, all right. Now it is now officially closed. Ma'am, Commissioner McGlaughorn, you may make your motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, let me thank Brian Barnett and his, his team for such an outstanding job in bringing this to the commissioners. Madam Chair, I'd like to, at this time, make a motion that we approve both A and B. And that we proceed on with this request of local government commission approval of the financing agreement.
Commissioner Ward?
A second is motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We move ahead with, with this item one A and B, with A and B. Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick? Miss, Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn? He, okay, Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Manager, is there a resolution with this or not?
Yes, there was a resolution as part of the, the motion. It should have been part of that entire package. Madam Attorney, are you satisfied with all the documents in the motion?
Um, yes, I'm, I'm interpreting and believe that Commissioner McGlaughorn's motion and the second from Ms. Ward included all that was in your package, which was an attached resolution, continuing the finance process, the submission of an application to the LGC, working with all relevant parties to execute the necessary documents related to the financing agreements.
We're good.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to items for report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Manager Elliott. It's good to be with y'all tonight. Tonight, I'll bring you the December twenty twenty tax collection report on the, for the Pitt County fiscal year to date, on July one through December thirty first of two, of two thousand and twenty. The combined collection rate for real and personal property was eighty four point zero eight percent. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was eighty one point seven three percent. Pitt County continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the remedies that are available to us through the North Carolina General Statutes. It is my recommendation that you approve the December twenty twenty tax collection report as presented.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ward?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the December twenty twenty tax collection report.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We approve the twenty twenty tax collection report. Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick? Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move to the second item. I believe, Mr. Crum, you back up with.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I bring you tonight a report of unpaid taxes for the year twenty twenty that are laying on real, that are lanes on real property. North Carolina General Statute one oh five, three sixty nine A requires the tax collector to report to the Board of Commissioners annually on the first Monday in February, the total amount of unpaid taxes for the current fiscal year that are lanes on real property. The report, we submitted a, a report, a preliminary report in January. And we sent y'all a new report today updating the totals. The report includes data for the county of Pitt, EMS, and the towns of Aiden, the town of Bethel, the town of Falkland, the town of Farmville, the city of Grevel, the town of Grumton, and the village of Simpson. The report we sent you today shows there is three million four hundred forty five thousand and five hundred thirty nine dollars that is outstanding property taxes that are lanes on real property. It is my recommendation that you approve the report as presented.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the report as presented.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the report as presented. Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Yeah. Commissioner Ward, your hand is still up. Do you have a?
No, ma'am.
Question. All right, thank you.
You usually, somebody usually takes it down, but I'll.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure. We'll move to the fourth item. I'm sorry, the third item is the financial report for the solid waste coming from Brian on EMS funds.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening again. You have in front of you your December thirty first financial report for the general fund, the solid waste fund, and the EMS fund. On the, we are at the fifty percent. We're halfway through the year on our fiscal year. On the general fund side, we have collected sixty one point one percent of our anticipated revenues, and we have spent forty six point seven percent of our anticipated expenses. We are tracking much better this December than we were last December on the general fund. A lot of that is due to the fact of the Warren Farm property, which we talked about a few minutes ago. And also, just want to point out that from a halfway through the year standpoint, overall financially, we are in incredibly great shape. We hope that the, we can duplicate this on the second half and finish the year strong. On the solid waste side, we have collected sixty eight point three percent of anticipated revenues and only spent forty two point eight nine percent of our expenses. On the EMS side, we have collected sixty nine point two one percent and only spent fifty three point ninety six percent of our expenses. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Any questions? Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the report as presented.
Commissioner Ward?
A second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the report as presented. Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And then we will move to the fourth item, which is Public Health Director's Report. And he's going to give us an update on the community vaccination program. Dr. Silverman?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Nice to see you. Nice to see you and the other commissioners this evening. Permit me to share my screen. And minimize. There we go. Well, I want to start out by, by telling you all that vaccine supply remains very limited. Vaccine demand remains greater than vaccine supply. When North Carolina opened vaccination to individuals seventy five and older, Pitt County Health Department had about six hundred doses for more than ninety five hundred eligible individuals. So obviously, very short of, of what our potential candidates are. When the opening of vaccination was extended to sixty five year old folks and older, they added about sixteen thousand more eligible vaccine candidates without an increase in our available vaccine supply. Our operations to date, provided vaccine is available, we have been holding vaccine clinics four to five days per week at the health department. These consist of both first and booster doses. We have tried to consolidate some of our booster dose clinics. We're able, they run a little bit faster, and this allows us to get more people through. On Saturday, this past Saturday, the thirtieth of January, we hosted a vaccination clinic where we vaccinated two hundred forty individuals from historically marginalized populations. My director, nursing director, Dr. Kimberly Hardy, and I'm sorry, I have a little frog in my throat this evening. My nursing director, Dr. Kimberly Hardy, worked with local groups to get that set up. So a shout out to Dr. Hardy on that one. We've had a number of mobile vaccine efforts. We knew there was a need to get our Pitt County EMS community vaccinated. Special thanks to Dr. Robert Portella, Jim MacArthur, our senior paramedic, and Randy Gentry for their assistance in vaccif- vaccinating Pitt County EMS providers. Dr. Portella and Jim MacArthur have been out around the county doing a series of offsite clinics for us from the health department's perspective to reach our county EMS personnel. They've been out to Farmville. They've been down to, to Winterville. They've been to Rifton. I think not Rifton, Simpson. They were in Simpson. Jim and, Jim and Dr. Portella have been, been bouncing around the county doing some of these clinics for us to kind of hit the, the north and the west and the south and the east of the county. In conjunction with East Carolina University, we've developed another mobile vaccine team program. In the breakdown of long term care facilities or congregate living facilities, forty of these facilities not covered by the federal program were assigned to Pitt County Health Department for vaccination. Obtaining consent and medical review of these individuals is a slow and tedious process. This has slowed this work down considerably. We do continue to work with these facilities. To date, this project, the Pitt County Health Department ECU Mobile Team has vaccinated three of these facilities, just under a hundred folks between the three facilities. So not quite half of what, of what we've been assigned in terms of beds. But we've also booked out their boosters with this team as well. So their boosters will happen when the time comes for that. This process seems to work pretty well. The team is, is getting comfortable taking vaccine out to a site, doing the work. We see we may be able to use this for other facilities or other operations as we continue to move through the vaccination process here in Pitt County. Our general public clinics, to date, we've held three large scale general public clinics for COVID nineteen vaccinations. These were all done at the Pitt County Agricultural Center. Each of these clinics vaccinated two hundred thirty eligible Pitt County residents. Please say, I personally worked the medical screening station at all of these clinics and was very privileged to meet many of our more senior, more mature residents in person, working in the clinics. These individuals were pre-booked for booster appointments, so they will come back to the Ag Center to receive their booster dose at the appropriate interval. And those clinics will begin next Monday for the booster doses. The joint Biden, Pitt County site at the Greenville Convention Center. Biden Health has received greater amounts of vaccine than, than the health department has. Both parties were seeking a larger venue in which to conduct vaccinations. A series of weekly coordination calls began on Tuesday, December twenty ninth, to discuss vaccine efforts to, to make sure we were serving the community in, in the best possible fashion. Discussions began, which ultimately led to the opening of the Greenville Convention Center as a mass vaccination site. The site went live on Saturday, the twenty third, very soft opening with a few hundred people booked to kind of test the mechanisms. Its official opening was on the twenty fifth of January, last Monday. And again, I apologize for this frog in my throat tonight. At present, the site is vaccinating more than a thousand individuals per day. An increase in capacity has been considered as part of the planning, so the first doses and booster doses can be given when, when we hit that mark. Because if you're given a hundred doses today, when you hit the booster interval, you got to be able to give two hundred doses a day. So, so we're looking at, at, at that capacity being able to be increased at the appropriate interval so that we can continue to give first doses and booster doses, provided vaccines available. The site is currently providing Pfizer COVID nineteen vaccine to eligible individuals. This is what Biden had in stock and what the state seemed to have easier access to. So at least in the short term, it will continue to be a Pfizer-driven clinic. At present, the site is expected to remain open through the end of May twenty twenty one. The site operates, will operate as vaccine is available. Hours of operation may vary due to vaccine availability. This week, the clinic will operate from Thursday through Sunday. This is in response to changes made in the federal and state allocation process, which guarantee a baseline allocation of first doses. And then ninety plus percent of those need to be out of the freezer by the following Monday to begin the next allocation cycle. Scheduling individuals who are pre-registered, and we did pre-register in excess of nine thousand individuals with Pitt County are being called and scheduled for the vaccination at the Greenville Convention Center. Last count, we were down to just a few hundred who had not been scheduled. We have had trouble contacting some of the individuals on the list, but continue to try. Every individual will be kept, will have been called more than twice before we give up on that individual. We did find, as we went through this, that some individuals went through the Biden self-scheduling system and were able to schedule themselves through the Biden platform when it opened. So there was a process of deduplication between our list and Biden's list. Moving forward, we will be integrating the scheduling platforms to create one scheduling system with multiple options to schedule. That will include a telephone option, an option through MyChart if you subscribe to MyChart through the Biden Epic Electronic Health Record, and an online registered, excuse me, online registration platform. Bottom line, through this past Saturday, the health department has vaccinated three thousand two hundred twenty one eligible individuals in Pitt County. Our weekly base allotment for the next three weeks, beginning today, is two hundred first doses. We expect to receive those later this week. We are currently deferring some first dose vaccinations until we receive that allotments. Booster allocations are still promised to match the first. Booster allocations are still promised to match the first dose allocations. Special event vaccine may be available by request to do certain groups, especially the historically marginalized populations. I'm pleased to tell you that at this point, no doses have been wasted. So we've always been able to find a a home for doses and have not wasted any. And if you look at the state website across Pitt County, twenty thousand six hundred thirty four first and second doses have been administered. Seventeen thousand plus of those are first doses with about three thousand, three thousand and change booster doses having been given. So that's, I think that's a number that should make us all feel feel better tonight in terms of how much vaccine has been given in the county. Special concerns, we recognize the the need to get the county sheriff's office vaccinated, to work with our our school district to get Pitt County school employees and faculty vaccinated. There are several other law enforcement agencies in the county. Our transit providers, including PGV, are are looking for vaccination. And then we have our non-EMS providing firefighters who are also in need of vaccination. All of these agencies and anyone who would otherwise fall into the designation of essential worker are part of what the state is now calling Group Three. And at this time, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has not approved Group Three for vaccination. But we are coordinating with these groups so that we have lists developed for these groups. And when vaccine is available and when the approval is given, we can move to schedule those individuals for vaccination through the health department. The COVID Vaccine Management System, otherwise known as CVMS, we have struggled with this, as has most every other vaccine provider. By week's end, if not before, we anticipate that all of our vaccination data will be in CVMS. We learned a process from Biden's where they were, they're working in Epic at the joint site and then creating a report in Epic and then using that report to populate CVMS. We are going to mirror that on our end, so we will soon begin to use Epic, our electronic health record, to to record the vaccinations that does two things, it gets it in the patient's chart. And then it also allows us to generate a report of that vaccine activity. And then that data will be manually, and I stress manually transferred to CVMS. There is no electronic push of data from our electronic record to the COVID Vaccine Management System. This has to be manually keyed into CVMS. At one point, we were manually entering data into three different systems. We had the CVMS system. We were entering data into the North Carolina Immunization Registry or NCIR, and then into our own electronic health record. This was based on some conflicting information from the state. The state had advised health directors that if you put it in CVMS, they would migrate it to NCIR. I have confirmed this with the state, and the state assures me they will migrate data from CVMS to NCIR, thereby eliminating that step in our data management cascade. Pitt County COVID nineteen data, I want to briefly review the data with you. I know mostly you were interested in the the vaccine information. This is kind of a snapshot of where we were last week. We were at about a hundred and twelve cases a day, a hundred and twelve point five cases per day. We're at eight point five cases per thousand. Our total cases were approaching fifteen thousand or about eight percent of the Pitt County, Pitt County population. And we were estimating that thirteen thousand and change or eighty six percent of our cases had recovered. We had accumulated seventy deaths. And our case fatality rate had dropped again to zero point five and was trending down in the unrounded numbers that has ranged from zero point five to zero point seven. A percentage of testing was still north of ten percent last week. We're at ten, ten point eight percent. When I prepared those numbers for my press conference on Wednesday last week, that was down nearly three points from the the high of thirteen point six percent where it had been most recently. As of about noon today, over the past fourteen days, we we've accumulated one thousand four hundred seventeen cases. That's one hundred one point two cases per day, so down significantly from last week. Our active cases per thousand, that's the fourteen seventeen divided by eighty five, one hundred eighty five thousand estimated Pitt County residents is down to seven point seven cases per per thousand in the county. In quieter times, that number was closer to three, so we're still more than twice where we were in the quieter times of of this pandemic. Our total cases today are in excess of fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand four hundred fifty. That represents about eight point four percent of Pitt County residents. Our estimated recovery has actually risen a little bit since last week in terms of a percentage. We're at thirteen thousand nine hundred sixty two estimated recovered, and that represents about ninety point four percent of cases here in the county. We have sadly added one, one other fatality since last week. And again, I extend my my condolences to the family and friends of that individual. Our case fatality rate is at zero point five, again in the unrounded numbers, still trending downward in the unrounded numbers, which is a good thing. And our percentage of positivity has continued to fall, and we are down to nine point nine percent, so just under ten percent as of as of earlier today. So our numbers, our numbers are improving overall on the county here. Wanted to show you this chart. This is a weekly surveillance summary I get from Biden Health that looks at virus, viruses, respiratory viruses circulating in the community. And as I mentioned before, there were some characters missing in action, and that's most notably something called RSV, which usually comes around the beginning of November and last through December. We've had no RSV reported through the hospital lab this year. And influenza, both influenza A and B, we've only had, this is that darker blue line. We've only had two cases, two positive PCR tests for influenza A through the Biden Hospital Laboratory this flu season. So at least from a viral ecology standpoint, it appears somewhat that COVID has supplanted influenza this season. Not to say that there isn't influenza out there or or that it's not circulating in the community. It's just circulating apparently at very, very low levels because we're not picking it up in our our normal surveillance. The rest of this tower is rhinovirus or enterovirus, which are typically cold viruses, enteroviruses also cause some GI syndromes, and then adenovirus, which also causes cold syndromes in folks. And I wanted to pull the the flu, flu surveillance curve for you all tonight, but I could not harvest that from the state website. If you look at a normal year's flu surveillance curve, what we're seeing develop for our COVID surveillance curve this year, they superimpose very, very well. You can take that COVID curve and put it over the seasons of flu curves, and you see that COVID really has kind of supplanted influenza as the primary circulating respiratory virus this season. I mean, if you, if it pleased the commissioners, I'm happy to to show you the the state website, walk you through the data dashboard. If you would rather dispense with that, I I made that an optional item for you all tonight.
We'll dispense with that.
Okay, happy to take any questions you or the other commissioners might have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have questions for Dr. Silvernail? I don't see any hands, Dr. Silvernail, so.
I'm shocked.
Thank, thank you, and and we want to say continue the the good work with your department and also with partnering with Biden. So please. We've, we've heard some good reports from the citizens on getting their their vac- vaccination.
Thank you, ma'am. We we understand that the door to door time at the at the convention center is about thirty minutes with the with the appointments. And, you know, on average, so that that's very good.
That's, that's good, so, okay, thank you.
You don't have to have a, an appointment to do that, though, do you?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, commissioners, by appointment only.
Okay. No other comments? Thank you again.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We'll move to the manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. So next meeting dates February fifteenth will be your next meeting, six P M. Then we move to March first at six P M. Want to remind the board of the NICO Legislative Conference coming up in March. Normally, you'd go through your rotation of the commissioners, you could go to that, but since it is virtual, all the commissioners are being invited to attend. If you haven't already done so, feel at the clerk knows she'll be happy to set you up. We say it's March eighth through twenty sixth. It actually spans the eighth through the twelfth, the seventeenth through the nineteenth, and the twenty fourth through the twenty sixth. So there's a about three, three different sets of of dates in the month of March that that virtual conference will take place. Wanted to also recognize, we received a letter, the board received a letter from a citizen from Virginia Branch, and the chairwoman just wanted me just to mention some of the things that she was mentioning there. She was requesting that our local, our local state governments to support the medical community in terms of improving safety in the community and functional communication business and and local state government. We just want to recognize her for reaching out to the commissioners and providing a handwritten letter and expressing her her thoughts and things that were needed. Also wanted to mention to the board, I think this was emailed to you and will be in your printed weekly info packet. The Mideast Commission is accepting applications for what they're calling a COVID nineteen micro loan assistance application. And this is to help finance existing local small businesses throughout our five county region to help them recover from COVID nineteen. Says eligible businesses should be, should be small businesses in Beaufort, Bertie, Hurford, Martin, and Pitt Counties. Says documentation providing evidence of loss in revenue since the start of COVID nineteen pandemic is strongly suggested. And you may apply for 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 between ten and fifty thousand dollars in an interest free loan. And if you will contact my office or the Development Commission, we can give you the the information on application for this. And the last top guest wanted to bring to the board's attention, you may have heard some of this, but we're having some backlog issues within environmental health in terms of more on the soil scientist side of getting lots evaluated for septic systems. We've got a housing boom, we've got a few positions they're still trying to recruit for, they have new hire that came in today. We're working with them, working with Dr. Silvernail to look at all options, whether it's hiring back retired employees who might, who might be willing to come and work on that basis. Other part time staff, staff from other counties. A program called the Alliance, which used to be in place with the state, which was a state network of retired environmental health employees. We're checking to see if that is still in place, trying to look under every rock to get people in here, even offering our own staff comp time or or paid overtime. We've done this in the past during other housing booms, but if you hear anything about this, just know we're looking at this, working with Dr. Silvernail and his staff, trying to address the needs in that that area of environmental health. With that, Madam Chairwoman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and Commissioner Ward, I see your hand.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the items for consent.
Madam Chairwoman, I know at the very beginning of the meeting, you had a request from Commissioner White to pull the minutes. Just want to respect her comment at the very beginning of the meeting.
Commissioner White?
Thank you, Chairwoman Huggins and Scott. Yes, as y'all know, my internet was giving me trouble last, during our last meeting. So I would respectfully ask that the minutes be amended to reflect a no vote since I was not properly excused from the meeting for item one under decision from the last meeting.
Motion.
Madam, Madam Attorney, I need directions.
Right, you have a motion on the floor to accept the items for consent that does not yet have a second. I'm not sure if Commissioner White is making a substitute motion to pull the item, the minutes from that meeting off the items for consent. In which case, if that's what she's doing, then she would need a second for that, you to prove your items for consent, and then you could address the minutes.
Yes, Madam Attorney, I would like to make a substitute motion.
And actually, since the first motion didn't get a second, we can actually just call that a motion.
Thank you.
My hand was raised. Yes, I I believe Nonley was first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Second, Ms. White's motion to pull the minutes from the consent agenda and approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. It's been moved in second that we pull that. But before that, Commissioner Coulson, do you have?
I was gonna, I was gonna second it.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now, we, now we need a motion now to to accept the consent agenda with with those corrections. Is that right?
My understanding was that the consent agenda was approved without the minutes on it. So now you just need to address what was pulled from the consent agenda, which is the minutes.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion, Commissioner Nonley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Madam Attorney, if it's appropriate pursuant to our rules, I move that Commissioner White be afforded the opportunity to amend vote that she requested at the previous meeting where she was removed due to a technology issue and that we approve the minute for that item thereafter.
I'd like to second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, it's been moved in second. I had, before I carry that motion, I have some hands. I want to see if they have any comments or questions. Commissioner Albright?
No, no, I'm, I'm trying to lower my hand, I've lost it, sorry.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Coulson, do you have a question?
No, I've got a second.
Okay, all right, it's been moved in second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
But just for the record, I will amend those minutes and then bring them back for adoption at the next meeting.
Thank you.
That's wonderful.
We're now at the items for discussion, I believe is where we are. And Scott, we have on the item, Sudden Lake Communication, would you like to?
Be happy to open it up and then turn it over to Commissioner White. So the last meeting, we had a request from Commissioner White to, for her to work with staff to draft a letter for consideration of a board dissenting Attorney General regarding Sudden Lake service. We looked at a number of different letters that had already been submitted by other counties and municipalities and worked with Commissioner White to draft a letter before you. So with that, I'll defer to Commissioner White for further comments.
Okay, Commissioner White?
Thank you. Yes, in my time on the board, one of the biggest complaints I have received from citizens is not just a lack of internet in certain areas in the county, but very poor service, particularly from Sudden Lake. And some ideas were shared with me by people that other counties and cities have been sending in a a letter to the Attorney General. After doing some thinking, I would like to propose that we have a public hearing and we advertise this to everyone, that way their complaints are on record. And we invite, invite Sudden Lake to attend the public hearing. And that would be a good first step before sending a letter to the Attorney General. I know a lot of other counties and municipalities have already done that, but I think a public hearing would be a good idea. And I'm open to any thoughts and suggestions. I did talk to Commissioner Perkins Williams on Friday, I believe. And when I said that Sudden Lake had service that was not, can't remember the word I used, not that great, she said that their service was bad. So anyway, I think this will be a good first step, and I would hope that I would get the support of the. So, anyway, I think this will be a good first step and I would hope that I would get the support of the Board to proceed with a public hearing in the future.
Commissioner Nonley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and let me first say that connectivity and the, the provision that every resident in Pitt County receive internet connectivity at a broadband level. I think this Commission's made very clear that that is a priority. And our team has continued to work and I'm thankful for our team for continuing to work at trying to secure increased connectivity for our residents and that's, that's a really concern in, in, in light of COVID. With the stress on education and virtual learning and professional life with, with virtual meetings. It's, it's no longer, it's no longer an option to have strong connectivity, it's in fact, you know, it's, it's a really requirement. So, I want to commend our team for working on that and we do have a number of providers of internet, sort of vendors of internet that are looking to enter the market in Pitt County. We've had discussions about that over the last, last couple of months. And I guess my concern with addressing one or another has to do with, in, in any public forum that we're sponsoring, has to do with mainly a concern that one, we're not the body that's tasked with, with oversight of, of cable franchise providers in, in the region, not rest with the state. And, and we're also not a judicial body, we're legislative body. And, and so I fear that any, any step that we would take to, to hold hearings on purported customer complaints where we don't have legal standing to bring these complaints on behalf of the individual. I think is, is somewhat problematic. And then there's the, the third issue that I really see with, and I think this is the one where we need to tread very lightly, is that the market ought to, ought to self-correct as long as we're doing our job as a government, making sure that we're providing, we're providing an environment whereby vendors can access and enter our, in, in our region. I think market dynamics are a better place for us to influence behavior. And I don't think that a government entity ought to be in the position of advocating for or against a particular provider. Certainly standing with the, in consumer with making sure that, that providers are not breaking the law. And that they're doing what they've set out to do. Of course, but that group that does that is, is rest with the state right now. And in light of that, I feel like there are more, more issues with us getting involved and particularly broadband, I guess hurting the market and interfering with the market where we've got, we've got competitors entering the market right now. So I, I just, I just, I would, if, from my perspective, sitting an attorney, we, if, if we don't have any real evidence of, of major consumer fraud and major market improprieties, I think that we need to do what we can do to assess our, assist our constituents with finding the right avenues to get them addressed through the proper remedies and continue to do that. But as a body, I don't think that we should be actively participating with advocating for, against any private company.
Commissioner Nonley, since you said legal, I'm going to call on our attorney to speak to the legality of it.
Thanks, Madam Chairman, you mean the legality as to our authority?
Yes.
Okay, so many years ago, the local governments, counties used to franchise cable and internet providers. We no longer do that, that is now solely within the jurisdiction of the state. And the Attorney General's Office on their website has a Consumer Protection Division with an online link and a toll-free telephone number that citizens who are concerned about their cable or internet service can call the Consumer Protection Division within the Attorney General's Office. There are certain issues other than consumer fraud issues that can be referred to the Federal Communications Commission as they relate to internet or cable services. There is no local authority that I'm aware of to exercise control or jurisdiction over an internet or cable provider.
Okay, thank you, I'm now going to go to Commissioner Ward.
Yes, I'd like to say first that I know the frustration and we all kind of feel it in, I know that there are certain places in the county that it's very, very difficult to get good service. But with that said, and if we were listening to what Chris said and what Janice said, I don't think that there's anything as Commissioners that we can do. And I, I really would hope that we would not pursue that and certainly not a public hearing. So I'm leaning in that direction.
Okay, Commissioner Perkins Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I heard Chris Nonley and I heard Attorney Janice Gallagher mentioned too, uh, uh, consumer fraud. And what, since we are discussing this so that our residents can hear it, could you tell me, both of you, what you consider consumer fraud is?
Are you asking me, consumer fraud would be a misrepresentation by an entity in dealing with its consumers. And Commissioner Perkins Williams, you actually, I think, shared with the Board a letter that you had received, if I'm not mistaken. That was the response from the Attorney General's Office to Suddenlink where they acknowledged the letters from the other counties. And in that letter, they indicated that their jurisdiction is in, over consumer fraud. They invited Suddenlink to a meeting with them to further investigate those issues. And so, I think from the perspective of the letter and the perspective of consumer fraud, I know that Commissioner White had attempted to bring this item earlier and at such time might have been on the front end of the letter, joining other counties that was then accepted by the Attorney General's Office. But I think your best description of consumer fraud would be in that letter.
You agree with that, Attorney Nonley?
Madam Chair, my mate.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins Williams. So my, mine really had to do with not the question of what consumer fraud is, but rather that we're not the body that ought to, 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 to handle the judgment of that. That we are really a legislative body setting policy, setting policy on the ground to try to create hopefully the best, best service for our, our constituents. But that, that's provided by private market, the private market. But that we not step into the role of judge and jury on what companies are doing in, in, in our role, right? There, there are folks that are, that are appointed and elected to do that. It's my opinion that we are not appointed and elected to do that.
Thank, thank, thank you, both of you. I do know that diff, same profession may have a lighter view or a different view about terminology and definition. But as a consumer and as a residence, I've used to brought companies that supplies internet services to constituency. My, my, number one, we have more than just two in this county. And they are all not accessible throughout the county. So those of you who have the privilege and opportunity of selecting a different services has a, a, a wider perspective to choose from. Not in business and in business studies is competition is something that will cause a company to provide a great customer service. And so far, none of the companies, the, the services that are provided in the rural, or particularly over here where I am, great consumer services. So even when Spectrum came here, I'm bringing up a new one. And I called, they said that they were not, and I, 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 I can almost spit in the city. They said they were not providing services to this area at all. So it's a greater problem with internet services. And it's not good when you, uh, when you don't have strong competition, period. Then you lean more towards the other way, which is not supposed to be something that we can say we have here. I would like to see, because now, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't take your vision, Nonley, because I'm not a, an attorney. I'm an end user of services. So what I'm saying is, if people, a large group of people in this county are complaining, we should have some, as a body of rules, that's who we are, we are rules, we don't follow all of our own. As a body of rules and as a, as a body of policy, there should be something that we can express by, as a body. And I do agree with Lauren, that's one of the biggest things I've heard as well as far as throughout the county, not just over here, but everywhere. People are not happy, you spend money. Number one, you can't budget when the, the bill constantly change. And when you have a service like that, the bill should be the same when you're not asking for any new access to something that they offer. So that's, that's my biggest problem, is there billing and services like that. And when it rains, you can forget getting on internet, I don't know why I got kicked off today. And, and then of course, I guess the person who's sitting on the county's end had to allow me in and he didn't, I guess he didn't realize I was off and couldn't get back in. So I had to wait till somebody saw that I was locked out. But there should be something and I'm for having a discussion. Now, Lauren, I agree with you, but to me, hearing is a sort of strong word. Discussion and a conversation with people in Suddenlink I like to see do because they are providing, I understand, a good service in a, in the northern part of this county. And I would hate for us to, some people out here don't have any internet service and can't get it because their home happened to be located on the wrong spot. So that's, that's out there. So if we can do some of that as a group, then maybe we should talk about it. If we talk about it, because we don't listen to each other's conversation anyway. So I like to see us talk about it. There are counties all around us, Mr. Manager, that are talking about it, doing something about it, Edge, Cone, Beaufort, all around us, they're doing something about it. And I don't know why we have to be tight-lipped on having a conversation about an issue that our residents bring to us or lay in front of us and constantly discuss with us. That's my feeling, and if we're going to talk about it, I'm ready. And I have kept a strong folder of all of my bills. And I have made notes every time I call. But if you have to sit on a call waiting for somebody to answer you two hours and a half, and I've done that, that is a serious customer service problem with the business provider. And I'm thinking that maybe they don't know that the customer service is that bad and you can't get to a manager, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins Williams. I'm going to go to Commissioner McLawhorn because he has not spoken yet. Commissioner McLawhorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I understand, there is problems with Suddenlink and I've, I've gotten reports on that, services of Suddenlink. But after listening to our Attorney Gallagher and Commissioner Nonley, we, we, we have but such a fine line to deal with and, and certain areas, we just don't have the authority to, to, to challenge. So with that said, Madam Chair, I think that we are proceeding the way that we've been on, on, on the right course. This may not be the proper time to try to deal with this because of the areas that it's pertaining to. But again, and, and, and comment somewhat to what Commissioner Perkins mentioned and also what Lauren White is alleging, that I, I agree, there are, there are some problems with Suddenlink, but I don't think these are the ones that we should be dealing with at this time, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go around one more time, Commissioner White.
Thank you. I understand that our authority is to influence, that our authority to influence in this situation is limited. But I feel strongly that we should can address the concerns of our constituents and the citizens of Pitt County by providing an opportunity to share, for citizens to share their concerns with Suddenlink representatives present. This might create an opportunity for solutions. We need to work toward a solution rather than just telling everybody in the county that it's not our responsibility, this doesn't fall on our plate. And if a public hearing, if, if that is not supported, then maybe we could just go ahead and send a letter to the Attorney General like other cities and counties have done. I was thinking that maybe a public hearing would be a good first step and kind of given, giving Suddenlink a time to hear these concerns personally. But if y'all don't agree with a public hearing, then maybe you would support sending a letter. Like I said, I understand that local government isn't in control of internet providers and I'm not saying that we should be telling them where they have to provide internet, but simply addressing the concerns of people that live in the county for their poor service, their lack of service when they are paying Suddenlink for this service.
Thank you, Commissioner White, Commissioner Ward.
Maybe the attorney can help us with an idea about a letter or and where we may just relate what some of our citizens have shared with us. Or if there is another way that, or someone else that we could get involved with this, I'm not sure. I know, I know what we're saying is that it's not our responsibility, but it is very aggravating. We once crossed the railroad track coming out of Bethel going to Robinsonville, there's absolutely no coverage over there, period at all. And everybody's got antennas and whatever else they have to have. But that's not just the only place in the county, it's the outlying areas. So I think that we all feel the same way, it's not on our plate, but you know, maybe a letter. Maybe we could get someone to work with Janice and maybe come up with a letter and bring it back at our, our next meeting for us to look at. In which we might just send the letter with the concerns that we are hearing from our citizens. Not necessarily us relating those concerns, but sharing some of the concerns that we've heard from citizens. And maybe ask them to come down here and have a public meeting in which all concerned citizens could come to. Anyway, that, I, I agree with Mr. McLawhorn in that we are not in this, it's not something that we can dictate to. But you know, a letter or something to support our citizens, I think, would be appropriate.
Commissioner Nonley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, gotta want to reject out of hand that it's, even if we don't have authority, it doesn't mean that it's not our responsibility to hear our constituents' concerns. It's absolutely our responsibility. It's absolutely our responsibility. Um and so, so. Is, as, as I think all of us do from time to time, we do receive bona fide complaints from citizens, especially those that are extremely frustrated. And we should help and assist and facilitate, address those concerns. Um and so, I actually don't have a problem with, with individual commissioners or, or any of us. Facilitating and helping, um, our constituents. Get these folks to the right place and help them. Don't just pass them off. Help them. Um, help them along the way. And if it, if it's a matter of holding town halls in our districts or doing things as individual representatives. I, I feel, I feel comfortable with that. I, I, I don't feel like that's a violation of, of, of the separation of, of our authority. Um, so because we do have, we do have an absolute responsibility to hear and address these concerns. And, and so, I, I, I don't want to be, that, that we're, by not having a public hearing, that we're somehow against. Um, or rejecting the constituents' concerns. I think it's more, are we gonna be about. Trying to get the market better? Are we gonna be about trying to help those concerns? Be addressed in a proactive manner as opposed to being a consumer complaint forum? And I, I, I just think it's more productive if we, if we handle it in the former way. Um, and then I'll leave it at that.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Uh Commissioner Colson?
Well, my, my feelings are that we as a body need to respond to our constituents. And I see no harm in us weighing in on this. Uh, we can send a letter to Josh Stein. Uh indicating that we are frustrated because of the complaints that we're receiving. It has nothing to do with our legal authority as to whether or not we're trying to control it. What we're trying to do is weigh in on it. And say, hey, there's a problem. Uh, I don't have any of, uh, the other commissioners getting complaints, but I have. I've gotten lots of them. And not just complaints with phone calls. I mean, I'll be at, out somewhere and all of a sudden, this topic of Southern Link will come up. The thing is, the real shame of it is that when Southern Link was a local company, it was a great company. It had good service and so on. But now, it, it, Mary's right. You can, you can wait forever trying to get, get through to somebody. And when you finally get through their phone tree and you, you just wanna, you know, almost scream at somebody. Is you find out, well, they say, well, I can't do anything about it. Or you may be wanting to report an outage. And when you report the outage, let's say it's on a Tuesday. Well, we can't get there till Monday of next week. Really? Well, are you gonna credit me for the time that I've lost? Try that one. No, they're not gonna give you a dime. I mean, I've been through that twice. And I imagine I'm not alone in, in, in that same frustration. They're overpriced now and their service really stinks. And I, I'm not sure what marketplace forces it, that, uh, Commissioner Nunley is talking about. I see no competition. This is basically a monopoly in this area. Uh, you, you can't say DirecTV and things like that are actually comparable. They're not. Uh, so, anyway, I see no harm in us having some letter formed. And we express our frustration as a group of commissioners. Let's say that none of the other towns, none of the other counties sent anything out. Well, there'd be no bell ringing. What there? Well, you can't hear something unless the bell rings. Why don't we make that bell ring one more time? Let's send a letter.
Thank you, uh, uh, Commissioner, uh, Colson. I would like to, uh, take a personal privilege here. And ask, um, Commissioner Nunley suggested something. And I would like to ask our, uh, attorney. If we could, uh, if we could work with, uh, Commissioner White. And set up a town hall, uh, meeting. Uh, her district that she could take the lead on doing a, a town hall meeting. Uh, in her district, which everybody in the county could, could go. And, uh, voiced their, um, their opinion or complaints, uh, with, uh. You know, at that time.
You're asking me if that would be allowable?
Yes.
Um, sure. Yeah, she, sure. Any commissioner can conduct a town hall in their jurisdiction anytime on any particular issue if they wanna hear. Um, from their constituents on a particular matter. So if I'm understanding what you're saying correctly. Um, and what was suggested by Commissioner Nunley was that for it not to be action of the board. That an individual, um, could still, an individual commissioner could still pursue the inquiry. Um facilitate, um, assistance to, um, their constituents. Um, yes, the answer to your question is yes, that's allowable.
And, and then, uh, any other commissioner could, uh, uh, work along with her, could participate or. Uh, and I, I believe that would, uh, would, uh, get. Because if, when you have the hearing or whatever. We cannot come up with a solution. We, you know, as, as a board of commissioners. We cannot, you know, we, we don't have, we will not have a solution to the complaints. We will listen to them, but we will not have a, a solution to it. So, uh, I, I think this is the better way, uh, for the, um, citizens and for Commissioner White. To be, uh, responsive to her constituents. And also to any other, uh, commissioner, Commissioner Perkins-Williams. You know, so, uh, in, in, in the rest of us wants to. Commissioner White, are you agreeable?
Um. Let me put my.
Commissioner White. I'm speaking to Commissioner White.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, I'm agreeable to having a town hall, um. My question is if I'm able to get my town hall together and I will invite any other commissioner that would like to attend, advertise it. If we're able to get it together before the next meeting and we bring complaints back to the board. And I have seeking guidance from Janice Scott and others on a letter. Um, is there a chance that this board would support any letter that is generated?
Well, well, I would, I would. I would not say a letter, let's have the town hall meeting and see what. What comes out of that town hall meeting with Southern Link and as to what the action. That they would, that they are willing, would be willing to take.
Okay.
Um. I'm still waiting on Commissioner White.
Yes, I mean, if, if, if that's, yeah, if, if that's the option, I mean, I, I'll do whatever I can.
Yeah, I, I would like to see that happen. If you agree. Commissioner Perkins-Williams, you have something. Commissioner White, you said yes.
Uh, Madam Chairman and Commissioner White and the rest of you, we could beat this, we could beat this bush all night and, and knock all the leaves off, won't accomplish anything. This is something I have add, I, I have already established throughout my district. Uh, town hall meetings. And they are already set. The dates are already there. And I'm worried about getting behind on my dates because they are just waiting for me to do it. And it's a lot of work, Commissioner White, to get that going. We have a survey too. In that, uh, town hall meeting and they are able to, uh, provide information in the chat. That my technology person is gonna be able to pull out and we'll be able to put some, compile something and put it together. So I'm a little bit on that. And I just decided that since we were not gonna do anything and I didn't want anything to happen to good service if you couldn't get it. But I do want the people to have an opportunity to at least express themselves. And that's on the agenda. And my first one will be for Bellevue and it will be Sunday at three o'clock. And they, and we're working on sending out the link right now.
Okay, as you said, Commissioner Perkins, we, we can beat this, uh, until all the leaves fall off. So let's, uh, at this point, right now, uh, Commissioner White, uh, is going to get with, uh, um. Madam Attorney and, and Commissioner Perkins-Williams. And you all will, uh, get your town hall meeting scheduled. As whether it's in your district or Commissioner White's district. You all will work on that. Okay?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner, uh, Ward.
I, I would just like to say that I think while all of this is going on, that's fine and good. And I'm, I'll be, I'll be excited to be able to go to some of those if I have an opportunity. But I still think that coming out of this meeting right now. I think we can certainly send a letter. I've read letters at other towns and counties just to. Um, the general assembly or to whoever and let them know our concerns and our.
Commissioner, Commissioner Ward, can we go with what we just agreed on?
Yes, ma'am. That's fine.
Thank you. We'll move forward, move on with, uh. Items for decision. The next one is, uh, the resolution to dispose of the Bethel ABC property. Uh, Commish, uh, Madam Attorney.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. On, on January eleventh, um, this year, the board directed the county manager to proceed with the transfer of. Transfer of the Bethel ABC property to the Center for Science, Technology and Leadership Development Incorporated, which is the private nonprofit. And you all may recall that Dr. Gary Moore came and spoke to the board, um, at that meeting. Um, so in order to follow the process, the legal process, um, general statute one sixty-eight, two sixty-seven. The county must, at a regular meeting, which is tonight. Adopt a resolution authorizing an appropriate county official to dispose of the property by private sale at a negotiated price. If the board does adopt the resolution that's included in your packet tonight. Then that resolution needs to be, um, published in the newspaper for ten days. After those ten days, um, then you can authorize, then your resolution will have authorized a county official. To execute the transfer of that deed from the county to the nonprofit entity. So if the board wants to continue on the path that we have started, um, you may, um, do so by resolution this evening.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
I move that we accept the recommendation and move forward.
Commissioner Nunley.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we move forward with the resolution. Uh, with disposal of the Bethel ABC Board property. Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Colson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you. Then we'll move to the third item. Uh, I believe Tim Coley is gonna come up and talk about the roof replacement at Technology Enterprise Center.
Yes, uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, this item is a, uh, contract and budget amendment for a new roof, uh, roof replacement at the Technology Enterprise Center. Uh, on Green Street. Um, it's in, uh, great need of repair. And, uh, so we put this project out for bid. Uh, we received three bids. Um, the low bidder was Etheridge Roofing, who has, uh, actually done work for the county prior. Uh, and they do good, uh, quality work. So we're, uh, pleased to have them as our low bidder. Um, the low bid was two hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars and that's for the entire roof there. Um, the, the funds, uh, for this will come from, uh, the Economic Development Commission. These funds were included in. Uh, in the, in their budget, uh, and approved, uh, in the last two years, uh, for this project. Um, so tonight, asking for, uh, approval and a motion to approve the contract and the budget amendment with Etheridge Roofing for two hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars.
Thank you. Uh, I'm saying a motion. I don't see any ahead. Commissioner Ward.
I say move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Colson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Well, now move to the fourth item, appointment to the Fire District Commission Board. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Madam Chairman, your recommendation to appoint Andrew Reynolds from Fountain Rule Fire District. And Herman Pigram from Sharp Point Fire to the Fire District Commission Board.
Um, Commissioner Ward.
I move to accept the recommendations to appoint Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Pigram.
Okay, Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
I, second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we appoint, the names presented. Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Colson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Well, then, then move to the appointment to the Local Firemen's Relief Fund Board. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, you have a recommendation to appoint Kathy Parker to the seat.
Uh, Madam, I mean, uh, Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Motion to send the recommendation.
Commissioner Ward.
I accept the motion.
It's been moved in second that we appoint, uh, the person named. Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Colson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item six, appointment and reappointment to the Biden Medical Center Board of Trustees. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, your recommendation from the Biden Medical Center Board of Trustees from their nominating committee. They're recommending Mr. Christopher Jenkins be appointed in the reappointment of Vice Chairman Mike Fitzpatrick.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Uh, Madam, Commissioner Ward.
Um, has that motion been made?
Yes.
I think it will, I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. That we, uh, reappoint Christopher Jenkins and Commissioner Fitzpatrick, Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Colson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, we are now down to, uh. Where we. Close session? Is that where we are?
Yes, it is. It has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen point one-one A four. To discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body. Also under one forty-three, three eighteen point one-one A one, to prevent the disclosure of confidential information. On that basis, uh, Madam Chair, you would need a motion and second to go into closed session.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes, Madam Chair, move that we, um, move to closed session.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Sheriff Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Colson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. We are back in open session. Um, Commissioner White. Um Commissioner White.
I would like to make a motion to approve the closed session minutes from our December twenty-first meeting.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Ward.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second. We approve the closed session minutes of December uh twenty-first, I believe. Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn. You gave a thumbs up. Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We're down to uh commissioners' comments at this time or reports. And I wanna remind you, I think the manager sent out an email uh text today saying that we're gonna move commissioner comments up before closed session. Uh so.
Yeah, going going forth on next meeting.
Next meeting, yeah. Okay, um. Commissioner Coulson.
I'm sorry, hit the wrong button. I have no comments.
All right.
No, no comment, thank you.
Perkins-Williams.
Oh, I have comments. Uh I don't know how many. Uh on Sunday, February the seventh at three o'clock, um residents in the Bellevue Township will be invited to a meeting, town hall meeting. And you will get the, you should see it in the paper, and you will get the link for the virtual setting. It is a virtual meeting.
Yeah, Commissioner. Oh, did you rearrange the name, Commissioner Ward? Yes, you did.
Ward, I I have no comment.
Okay. Did I call Albright already? Y'all switched.
I have no comment again. Thank you.
Okay, y'all switched the order on me. I was going. Okay. McGlaughorn?
You already got him.
Oh, okay. All right, did I get everybody?
Um you didn't get me, but I don't have comments anyway, so.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Fitzpatrick.
I would just make a motion to adjourn.
I second that. That's that's what I was gonna.
Yeah, I was calling in order that I was looking at it on on screen and then when and you kept moving the the names, then I lost where I was in in college. So I apologize for not calling you um Fitzpatrick and White. Okay, I think I heard a motion to adjourn. Uh uh. Okay, um Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughorn. Thumbs up. Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Good night.